All right, are we ready to begin? Okay. All right. Good evening and on behalf of the City of Independence, welcome to this Planning Commission meeting for the evening of August 8th. I'm going to start with Pledge Allegiance and then we'll roll into the rest. Thank you. Tonight, I think since we have so many people, I'm going to kind of read the long version of the welcome, which we don't always do. But for those of you who are unfamiliar with our meetings, it's responsibility of this commission to hold public hearings and make recommendations to the City of Independence Council on matters relating to zoning and land use changes within the city. We also consider and make decisions on plaits, special use permits, and other issues, as well as changes in codes and policies that relate to city planning. The procedure is as follows. First, the applicant will be recognized to speak on behalf of their case, followed by anyone else in attendance that wishes to speak in favor of the case, followed by people who wish to speak against a case. After that point, the commission can call the applicant back up and ask your questions of the applicant for them to answer. Finally, the commission will, once we've heard what we feel like we need to hear, will close the case and then discuss amongst ourselves and then take a vote. So, because this is the only public hearing of the cases on the agenda tonight, all of those who wish to speak tonight, please remember to address the chair, keep your point, your comments on point, and if you're repeating something someone else has said, just please acknowledge that you're repeating what that person said. That will help expedite tonight's meeting. So if you would like to speak tonight, or even think you might like to speak tonight, will you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth before this commission? If so, say "I do."
(inaudible)
Thank you. You may be seated. Okay, before we get started, everybody check your phone, including us and me. Put an eye on silence, please. We don't need to be rocking out to Billy Joel or anything in the middle of it all. Okay, first thing on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
What?
Roll.
A roll call.
Roll a call. That's the first thing. We're ready.
Okay. Commissioner Ferguson.
Here.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Here.
L Wiley.
Here.
And Chairman McLean.
Here. Thank you. Okay. Next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda, and I want to apologize publicly before we go to this, because we did the same routine last time, and apologize to DPAC publicly because we had a little snafu in our understanding of how a case was pulled. We were wrong, that being me, and so now we're having a redo, so...
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I also apologized already to Commissioner Nesbit, and I here forth here again apologize to Commissioner Nesbit, because we adhere to the protocol. I did speak to counsel, and he assured me that he would be here and that that snafu will not happen in the future. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I yield back, Madam Chair.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
As to the minutes, I want to give Counselor opinion on this. Because the consent agenda says it's supposed to be unanimous, last one was not unanimous, does that mean it doesn't pass, or does it, we need to redo it, or what?
The...
Because everything I've read is supposed to be unanimous when it gets voted down through on the consent agenda, or they pull something from the item. And since it didn't get pulled, and it says right here it passed, so I want to make sure we get this correct in the minutes, so we don't have any problems coming back.
You're saying the minutes from the...
Last, last...
That last, last time.
Your ass.
I, I don't see an issue with the fact that the, the vote itself wasn't unanimous.
Yeah, wasn't unanimous, because everything I've read says it's supposed to be unanimous on a consent agenda, because otherwise you pull it off there to talk about it.
It, it can be pulled off. I don't see a concern that way. That said, if you all want to approve the, so it would have been the June...
July 25th.
Right. The July 25th meeting, you're talking, you're referring to the June 27th and July 11th minutes, is that what you're referring to, that were approved at the July 25th meeting?
No, I'm talking about the minute, the minutes from the July 25th meeting.
The, yeah.
Okay.
Last meeting.
The counsel is correct.
The ones we're approving.
Okay, so I, I'm confused on the question.
Because it didn't pass unanimously, I voted no on it. So I'm saying it wasn't voted unanimously, so the consent agenda should not have passed. Is that correct, or not?
That, that is not correct, as far as I know. There's no rea, so tonight, currently on the consent agenda is the, are the minutes from the last meeting?
Right.
Okay. If the question is, can those be on the consent agenda, the answer is yes.
Well, they can be on there, but I'm saying the minutes do not read correctly, in my opinion, is that the...
If the minutes, if you don't believe the minutes are, are from July 25th are correct...
Right.
Then I would recommend that those be pulled from the consent agenda, so that you all can discuss them, so they can be corrected.
Okay. Then I'd like to pull that also from the agenda. So basically, as I want to make sure we got that correct. I mean, I don't want to have any problem with that.
Okay.
And then I'd like to pull case 23-600-02.
Okay, so let's, we're going to pull...
And that's, that's really everything on consent agenda.
Okay, so we're going to pull the minutes and the signage case separate.
Right, separate.
So first, let's talk about the minutes from...
I mean, that's where, that's where we're at. I want to make sure that we're correct, because I don't want to say that, because in my, what I've read, it says it, if it, it's not unanimous, it does not pass. So that's why I'm trying, I know it's five to one, it should pass, but I mean, what I've read, it said it should not. So I want to make sure what, if I'm understanding wrong or not.
Well, it's not, so, it's atypical to have a consent agenda that doesn't pass unanimously, because in theory, if there was an issue with it, then it was pulled off, right?
Right, right.
Which obviously didn't happen.
Right.
So, I, I mean, that's something, I can, I can confirm that, this is not something that I've had to deal with before, but at this point, where we are right now, the, the two items on the consent agenda have been pulled off.
Okay.
Okay, so there, so there is no consent agenda to approve.
Right.
So right now, we're talking about the Planning Commission minutes from July 25th.
Correct.
So, we, we can, we can look at, I can look at the issue about...
And bring it back to us.
And bring that back. I mean, that's not, yeah, so, because at this point, it doesn't make any difference. But we can confirm, I can confirm exactly what that should look like. So right now, the question is whether or not to approve the Planning Commission minutes from July 25th as they're presented, or if those need to be amended.
That's, that's why I wanted, we need to have those amended, make sure they're correct.
And, and just to be clear, the, the issue is surrounding case number 23-600-02.
No, the, really, it's the whole consent agenda, should it have passed, since it didn't get unanimous vote, that's all I'm saying. I mean, yes, that was on there, so that would mean that would fail, but since we pulled it off, since it's come back to us, we're going to talk about it again tonight, I think it wouldn't matter about that. I just want to make sure that the minutes read properly, what's supposed to be said, that was said last...
So, I mean, my, my position would be that the minutes are correct. I mean, what, what is, as I, again, I wasn't here, but I, I did, I did watch it, and my recollection is, what's in the minutes is what happened. So that's what the minute, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong...
Well, the only thing that's not in the minutes is where I asked for it to be pulled off, that is not in the minutes.
Okay, then, then that can be, then, then that can be added to the minutes, if that's, if you all want.
Okay.
If you all want that added to, to, to show that, that your attempt to do that, then I, we can do that, correct?
Okay.
So you all would, I, I guess I would ask that you all vote on...
Postponing? The, the, the minutes to...
Or just amend it.
Or just amend it?
Yeah, if you all, if you all want to vote on, on amending the minutes to, to account for Commissioner Nesbit's request to have item 23-600-02 pulled, and, and we can add, we can add that into the minutes, if that's what you want to vote on.
Did you write that down? What he said was perfect.
And, and that it was pursuant to the advice of counsel.
We, yes.
Thank you, Counselor.
Certainly.
So I'll make a motion of that.
Second.
Thank you. We're ready for a vote. And the vote is to amend the minutes, current minutes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner, Chairman McLean.
Yes. The Planning Commission minutes from June 27th have been amended and passed. Okay.
Okay.
Case number two, case number 23-600-02, special sign permit at 3232 South Nolan Road.
Okay, Madam Chair, the reason why I asked for it to be pulled, I was on the Nolan Road Improvement Committee back several years ago, and I thought there was an ordinance that there can only be monument signs put on Nolan Road now.
So I think we have to have staff report first.
Oh, oh, is that where, okay, I thought we were just talking about it.
We didn't do the staff report last time, so we probably...
Okay, that's fine.
Right?
With it now being on the regular agenda, typically you, you would do a staff report, and I believe they're prepared for that.
Okay.
Is that correct?
All right, okay.
So that was a motion. Okay, this is case 23-600-02, an LED Electronic Message Center sign, special sign permit for Cargo Largo. This is on the new Cargo Largo building, right across from Truman High School, west of the railroad tracks. So, this is a fairly recent aerial photo, you can actually see the building on this one already. Got the zoning here for the area, where you can see in, C zonings around the property, as well as the industrial zoning to the west, including the Lipton plant, and how that fits with the comprehensive plan. Of course, purple shown as a business park use, and then the retail corridor that is Nolan Road shown in the red, and then parks and other business park uses to the west, where the, the, is it Lipton, or whatever plant that's there now? Unilever, yes. So this is the site plan of the property. So Nolan Road is what's along the bottom. So north is on your right, and that's the new interior road that's on the north part. So you got a parking lot on the south, and a little bit of parking lot between the railroad tracks and this new building. The sign location is on the south elevation, where it's proposed. And as you can see here, you can, it's very tiny, you can see the proposed sign elevation location on that, on the south elevation, which is the second one down, the longer one is the east elevation of the building, and the other two down below. So the, there's two components to this sign. There's, of course, the channel letters that are just against the face, and then the LED billboard, and this case has to do with the EMC, the LED billboard there that's 576 square feet. And here's a image of, of, in color, what that would look like. And then again, here's the aerial photograph showing the existing building. As the Cargo Largo project nears its completion, so the applicant is seeking to install this LED EMC on the south elevation, as I showed. This sign can be used to both advertise, as, as well as be a public announcement bulletin board. The closest existing EMC on this part of the corridor is, of course, the one on the Sonic, southeast of the property, down at 35th and Nolan. Visibility should be fairly good, given the area's flat topography and, and straight sightlines. The sign will be mounted on, on the 50-foot tall south facade, under the Cargo Largo channel letter. The special use permit is required, given that the portion of the sign... There's an EMC, will be more than 70 percent, 74 percent of the total sign area. The UDO requires that the EMC portion of the sign can only be 65 percent, given the sign area. Again, the EMC will be 576 square feet, rather than the maximum limit of 530 square feet. The total sign coverage will be less than 10 percent of the south facade. Further, the UDO requires that the EMCs be on freestanding signs. This LED will be on a wall sign, thus that's the second reason for needing the special So this is looking directly at the sign location on the south facade. And here's a look at the west elevation, or this is looking to the west, or past it, on the south facade. And then this, this is looking back toward the northeast on that south facade. And then this is looking at the parking lot across to the southwest, torn unilever, and directly south to the existing Cargo Largo facility. And then this is southeast, looking at the railroad crossing in front of Truman High School. And then this is along the east side, facing Nolan Road, the parking lot there, and there you can see the Buick dealership, there in the northeast across the railroad track. Staff recommends approval of this special sign application with the following conditions. Number one, the lamp size may not exceed 54 watts of incandescent lighting for daytime use, and automated dimmer must be installed to reduce nighttime wattage to a maximum of 30 watts. And of course, in this case, it's an LED, and LEDs may be used, provided that light intensity is no greater than allowed for incandescent lighting. Number two, any display on the Electronic Message Center must remain illuminated and visible for at least eight seconds, and messages displayed may flash only when the displayed message is replaced by another message. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? Is the applicant here? Okay. Before I open it up to public. Do you have questions?
I have, I have questions, staff.
Go ahead.
Okay, now, Brian, the, the pictures we got show it's going to be on the east side. That's what, that's what's confusing me. You're saying on the south side, and I'm seeing pictures where it's going to be on the east side.
No, it's planned to be on the south side.
Because I mean, this picture doesn't look like anything that you just showed up there. This is what I got in my packet.
That, the rendering...
I mean, just go back to where you say it's going to be placed, up back up. Okay, wait, you're going to say it's going to be placed, right? And see, that's the one I have in the packet, it looks like that, and that's definitely on the east side, because even the, the long, the long area shows it on our paperwork here.
Right, but that, that is the color elevation, but...
And see, that would be Nolan Road side, that's why, when I started first, in saying there was an ordinance out that new signs had to be monument signs on Nolan Road, so that's what's confusing here on me. I just want to make sure we're okay on that. I mean, since the applicant's not here, it's kind of, we...
All indications for us is that it's on the south side. Now, the rendering may or may not accurately reflect the way that looks. The intent, I think, of the rendering is just to show what it's going to, what the signs intended to look like, but it may not necessarily line up exactly with the south facade projections.
Yeah, the elevation picture that you see here is the locational drawing.
Because I, I drove down Nolan Road, and where you, that's why I looked at this sign here. If you drove by it, you can't even see where they're going to put the sign, because of trees and the hills, and I was in a tow truck, so that's what threw me off there.
They, they, when they made the rendering, the rendering doesn't match with, with the elevation.
So it is going on the south side, for sure.
Yeah, it's going on the south side, yes, like, like is shown here on the elevation.
Okay, then my only question that's going to be also, is that this is right in front of a high school that has windows, and so we're going to have kids just sitting there staring out at this sign as it blinks every eight seconds, instead of paying attention inside the school. That is another problem I see with this sign being put there.
If I'm correct, Commissioner Nesbit, that flashing sign, correct me, is on the south wall.
It's on the south wall, but they'll be able to see it.
No, they will not.
The east wall will be seen.
The east wall will be seen, yes, but I'm saying on south, I mean, it's not going to be as visible as the east wall was. That's another reason it threw me there, because that's, but as long as you're putting on the south wall, I mean, but then I'm back to our ordinance of a monument sign, so are we still good there? Because, or did that ordinance go bye-bye, or?
Well, we do, we do still have that ordinance, but that would be part of the special sign permit.
Okay, so it supersedes that ordinance?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
I just have a quick question.
Okay, hold on. No, 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 you have to, so, this hearing is now open to the public. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for the case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? If you have a question, you're welcome to come up if you were sworn in, but you have to state your name. Are you for or against?
I'm neutral.
Okay, so you just have a question?
I'm Colleen Haff. Thank you for allowing me to ask a question. I was just curious what kind of messages...
We have to have your, we have to have your name and address.
Oh, okay. I live at 717 South Willis Avenue, Independence 64052.
Thank you.
I'm just curious as to what kind of messages will be displayed, because I heard them say that it could be open to, like, announcements and things like that, so that would be my question.
And that's what they indicated here, that they would open to putting a public announcement, use as a public bulletin, bulletin board.
So you think people could rent usage of that for specific announcements about certain activities or community events going on?
I mean, I, I would, I would think they could.
We haven't been told specifically that that's what they would do, however, I do know that they've indicated that they would have it open for public announcements.
Well, I think it might be a great way to market some of the activities we have going on, like the mayor trash pickup and different things, so, anyway, that was my question, so, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against this case? I guess that was neutral. Hearing none, I'm going to close the public portion of this case. Commissioners, any more questions or comments?
Madam Chair.
All right, entertain, let's go.
This matter has been studied to agnostium. It is about to come to fruition. I delightfully move that we, in the matter of case number 23-600-02, special sign permit at 3232 South Nolan Road, be approved as presented, with the stipulations as noted by staff.
I second. And we're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
Yes.
Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-600-02, special design permit has been passed. Thank you. Okay. Where am I? Lost my agenda. Next case, number 23-100-19, rezoning of 704 North Pearl Street. Request by Chester Campbell to rezone this property from R6, which is single-family residential, to R12, which is two-family residential. Staff, we're ready for the report.
Okay, this is case 23-119. The vicinity map here shows the property location along, it, it actually, it actually doesn't show, but it's where Pearl Street is here, the, the little curve there, where that says North Pearl is the location of the property. You can see where that is in relation to North College Street and North Nolan Road, or that's on North College Street, East College Street and North Nolan Road. And the applicant would like to rezone this single-family property, which is owned R6, to R12, to allow two-family residential. So you can see the zoning in the area is entirely R6, single-family, in all directions around, and reflective of the comprehensive plan, envisioning resident, continued residential neighborhoods in the vicinity. So it's an area of single-family homes all around, but this is a duplex that was designed and built that way as a duplex, so it's not a conversion from a single-family home.
Can you repeat what you just said?
The building was actually constructed originally and designed as a duplex, so it's always been at least a duplex, having had additional units from time to time, but it was designed and built as a duplex.
Thank you.
This request to rezone this property from R6 to R12, like I said, is to correct a situation where you have a existing duplex within an R6-owned area. While having been configured at times to more than three units, the building was originally designed as a duplex, rezoning to R12 will acknowledge the two-family nature of the existing structure. Physical characteristics of the property, the 7,017-square-foot lot contains a 1,476-square-foot, one-story brick duplex. The lot has a lawn area in front, and behind the duplex, there's a rather small backyard with a, with a 625-square-foot accessory building. The property has no onsite parking... The property has no onsite parking as such. It has a pull-off area that is partially on their property, but mostly in the right-of-way. The pull-off area would need to be reconfigured to accommodate at least two head-in parking spaces. Characteristics of the area, to the northwest, northwest, southwest, east, and southeast of the property lies many single-family homes on small lots. There's a vacant lot there, catty-cornered to the northeast on Pearl. There is a group home, basically, to the south. That's why there's the large paved parking lot immediately south of the property, in that, for that converted residence. Otherwise, the property is very residential-looking. As far as analysis goes, this application is within keeping of the measures of success of the strategic plan for the City of Independence, vision to improve housing conditions. Comprehensive plan guiding principles that most accurately describe this is, the situation is wanting to maintain housing stock in an established neighborhood. As far as sub-area plans, the vicinity around the lot is not located within an identified sub-area plan. The zoning classification allows for one, two-family dwellings, and of course, other residential uses like schools, churches, government facilities, daycare. R6 zoning is similar, except for it excludes the duplex, otherwise it allows the same uses as the R12. Analysis, historical and archaeological sites, there are no apparent archaeological issues with this property. Public utilities are long-established, this is the existing neighborhood. It's not on a low spot, not anywhere near a floodplain or stream buffer. No public improvements are planned, and the city is, does not have any capital improvements, investments planned for this area. So, here's a picture of the duplex there, and you can see the pull-off area for vehicles that, where that van is off to the left, is actually on the property of that group home that's to the south there. And that's actually, this is a better picture of that. And then across the street, or actually to the north of the property, on the same side, and then this is looking down toward the street to the north, and this is looking northeast and to the southeast of the property. Staff recommends approval of this rezoning, and ready to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Brian, how come we're only recommending two parking spots when it's a duplex, when there probably be as many as four cars?
I mean, um...
Shouldn't we have, like, two parks for...
I mean, the code requires just one per duplex unit, and we can't really condition the zoning, anyway, but we're just saying that that's what they need to provide...
Okay.
...when they do make improvements.
One of your drawings up there, it looked like the house is on the property line, but it's not, correct? I mean, you had something, I mean, even when I look here on my piece of paper, I just want to make sure.
Oh, you have to, you have to take these county property lines with a grain of salt.
Oh, okay.
They are not...
They're not, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
They're not adjusted for the photographs.
I wouldn't think it'd be that way, I just wanted to make sure that, okay. I guess the only problem is, is that I guess when we, when they built this area, we missed it, when the permits or something, I mean, on how they were able to build a duplex at that time, I mean, I don't know if the zoning was different back then?
I assume, looking at the age of this property, that it predates our zoning ordinance from 1965, I'm sure.
Okay, that's it.
Am I understanding that this was built in 1965?
I don't, I don't know the year it was built. It appears to be something older than our, when our zoning code came in, which was 1965.
So it's been there some 50-plus years?
Yeah.
So it's not a new construct, uh, structure?
No.
Madam Chair, one of the guiding principles of this commission has been that residents are entitled to the quiet enjoyment of their property, and that there's the preservation, and the preservation of the character of their neighborhood. If this property has been there for 50 years in its current state, I cannot imagine what, how we can object to that which has always been, literally.
Okay, well, let's see what the public thinks.
Yeah, let's see.
All right, is the applicant here? Would the applicant like to come forward? Come on up. And if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Chester Campbell. I recently purchased the property. I just drove up from Dallas-Fort Worth today to be here. The, I have a longtime presence in the City of Independence. I also own the Gaslight Square Apartments next to Truman High School for over 20 years. They were just inspected last week with flying colors. We rent to 55 and above, below-market. I've always watched the City of Independence redo Nolan Road, the bridge, build the outdoor world, et cetera, and do lots of improvements, and we're part of the improvement process. One thing I wanted to say about that picture is, if you were to look at the top-down, the structure behind it is actually a two-car garage with roll-up two-car garage doors. There's lots of parking there. I have no problem with the request to put more in there. I agree with Mr. Preston. Best use of this property is to zone it R2. As Mr. Harker also said, the property next door is a women's shelter with multiple people. We share the driveway with her. There on the corner, we're right next to the corner. We're not in the middle of the neighborhood, causing a problem. We will restore this property so that it's nice and benefit to the community, and hope for the best renters we can get. I've been here over 20 years. I don't flip property in Independence. I'm a, try to be a good landlord.
Well, thank you, we appreciate it. Commissioner Nesbit, are you so happy?
Parking. There's more parking. Secret parking.
Commissioners, sorry, did you have any questions of the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Why didn't you ask Commissioner Nesbit, is he happy?
Because he loves parking. It's very important to him that there's enough parking, and I thought that would make him really happy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak for this case? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against this case? Hearing none, the public portion of this case is closed. Commissioners, entertain any discussion or emotion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion to approve case 23-100-19, rezoning 704 North Pearl Street.
Thank you. Second?
I second.
Thank you, and we're ready for roll.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley?
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley?
Yes.
And Chairman McLean?
Yes. Case number 23-100-19 has been approved. Thank you, and best of luck.
Get ready.
Okay, next case is case number 23-175-04, UDO Amendment Number 58, Inglewood Arts Overlay District. Staff report.
Okay, this presentation is going to be for both the UDO amendment and the rezoning that is authorized by doing the UDO amendment, so, because we're talking about the same geography, basically, so...
Okay, that's right. So we're going to put these two cases, you're going to present them together, so case...
They'd have to be voted on separately, but we're going to present them together.
Okay. I did not remember that. So case number 23-175-04, UDO Amendment Number 58, and case number 23-100-20, rezoning of Inglewood Arts Overlay District, will be presented together.
Okay. So if you can see my map on the vicinity, rather small there, but it shows basically an area from the square all the way over to the Brookside Boulevard corridor, and from Truman down to 23rd, and that's roughly the area of the overlay that we'll be talking In fact, here's a picture of it right here, outlined on the zoning map. You can see the bulk of the property here would be residential, mostly single-family residential, and then you can see that, you can see Sterling coming up through the middle and, and the Inglewood Commercial District there in the middle, and then you can see up toward the northeast corner, penetrating near the square area. Comprehensive plan generally indicates residential for most of this area, except for the major business districts, and selected node areas along the Truman and, and 23rd Street corridor. Here's a, another picture of it, is... Project description, the city proposes the creation of the Inglewood Overlay District, bounded by Truman Road, Spring Street, Pacific Avenue, Pleasant Street, 23rd Street, Crescent, 20th, Arlington Avenue, 18th, and then up Brookside back to Truman Road. This amendment to the UDO will permit the establishment of an overlay district to extend arts opportunities, including commercial elements introduced by the creation of the art district to the residential and commercial neighborhoods in the west central, in west central Independence, and create new housing opportunities and configurations. Inglewood Arts has been involved in efforts to create an overlay district for the neighborhoods surrounding the Inglewood Arts District. The proposed overlay zone, Inglewood Arts Overlay District, will extend, let's see, as I said before, in areas around the existing art district. In short, many of the creative uses permitted in the commercial portion of Inglewood would also be authorized in the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Importantly, though, it would allow smaller homes that fit in the area and neighborhood's historic pattern of particular significance. It will prevent work-live opportunities and the construction of new cluster communities. And we'll talk about that a little later. Also, it will protect the area and neighborhood from predatory uses like short-term loan services and bail bonds and toll lots. The Inglewood Arts Overlay would supersede basis district regulations. The intent of the proposed overlay district is to help establish a robust and sustainable mixed-use area with art-related businesses integrated in a manner that maintains the residential character of the area. The intended result of the overlay is to help establish a mixed-used area with art-related businesses, as well as other low-intensity neighborhood-supporting businesses, live-work units, and traditional residences integrated in a manner that maintains the residential character of the area. The newly proposed district, by overlaying the base zoning, takes precedence over the base zoning, except for the existing art district. Like the base districts in the UDO, the proposed overlay has a use listing, a permit, or list, table that lists permitted, conditional, and special and permitted uses. Additionally, the proposed overlay will require residential design standards and minimum floor areas for single-family homes. It also contains a lot and accessory dwelling unit regulations. These include the size, number, setback, design, and height of the ADUs, which is the accessory dwelling unit, as well as regulations for parking, the sale of units, and occupancy. Specifically, short-term rentals are prohibited in ADUs, and other rentals are regulated under the rental-ready program of Chapter 4 of the city code. Lastly, the owner of the lot must live in either the property's main residence or the ADU. The ADU must comply with the building code and the home occupation requirements. The, in the, that acronym, the AA, that's the Inglewood Arts Overlay District, EAOD, would also allow, quote, "pocket neighborhood clusters." These will be groupings of three to 12 small residences, often around a courtyard or a common space, designed to maximize space and encourage time spent in a community space. Code defines the purpose of cluster designs, allowed uses, and site requirements. It lays out design parameters for common spaces, private open spaces, front porches, street-facing facades, privacy between dwellings, community amenities, parking, storage, refuge, recycling, and fences. The EAOD provides provision for the establishment of home eateries, which are small-scale residential businesses serving food and drink. The regulation outlines the number of seat requirements for parking, signage, as well as prohibiting carryout or delivery orders. And lastly, the EAOD would allow small advertising signage to a maximum size of four square feet for businesses, and outlines those requirements. Analysis, the application is within keeping of the measures of success for improved housing conditions. The 2023 City of Independence Action Plan calls for to stabilize and revitalize neighborhoods by partnering with citizens and businesses to promote and maintain safe and healthy and desirable living and working environments. This is to be accomplished by incorporating best practices into the UDO, and encourage infill housing in neighborhoods, and collaborating with community partners on various methods to stabilize neighborhoods. As far as the comprehensive plan and guiding land use principles that would apply to this, there are several guiding, like, principles that would be applicable. The zoning would assist in protecting and enhancing the viability, livability, and affordability of residential areas by promoting economically-integrated neighborhoods, a wide range of housing options... of residential areas by promoting economically-integrated neighborhoods, a wide range of housing options, encouraging connected neighborhoods, and preserving the visual character and function of established neighborhoods. Additionally, the zoning would assist in fostering redevelopment opportunities to revitalize unused or underused property by encouraging redevelopment or adaptive reuse of vacant or underutilized buildings and sites, promoting infill development where appropriate, and promoting affordable space for small startup, newer growing businesses, and encouraging reinvestment in existing neighborhoods. As far as subarea plans, the district will have six subarea plans located within its boundaries: the downtown redevelopment area, the midtown Truman Road 353, Inglewood area, the Truman Winter Plan, and the Truman Gateway Plan. All of these plans have had a focus on revitalization of older commercial and residential neighborhoods, as well as protecting and enhancing the viability, livability, and affordability of these neighborhoods. This rezoning would assist in those efforts. I'm not going to go completely through all the elements of the base zones, but this area that's a large section of Western Independence includes a number of the base zones from our zoning table, mostly single-family residential R6 zonings, as well as a smattering of R12 duplex zoning and R18 PUD, and R30 PUD, which is the garden apartment, and high-density apartment zonings. And then our transitional office residential zonings, as well as the level, three levels of C District that we have, our neighborhood commercial, general commercial, and service commercial zonings, and these are mostly, you know, along 23rd Street, along Truman Road, and the, in the area, also up by the square in places. And then particularly along Truman Road, we have some I-1 industrial as well. So, I'll begin with a four corners tour. So, this is the far northeast corner of this overlay zone proposed. This is Spring and Truman. And then, I'm not quite at Brookside here. I went to Glenwood because it's a little dangerous and difficult to put up a sign at the corner of Truman and Brookside, so went up a block here. This is Arlington and 23rd Street there at the southwest. And then this is Pleasant and 23rd Street at the southeast. I included a number of typical houses that would also be the scale of what would also be looked for in infill as far as new development within the neighborhood, consistent with what's here now. And this is actually along Sterling just a little north of the railroad track, north of the arts district. And this is north of Winter Road there, and you can see where there's some existing lots that aren't occupied right now in this area, real close to the arts district. Just another examples of some small bungalow houses and others near the railroad crossing. Another on Sterling. Another example in the neighborhood to the west. This is, I think, is actually on Willow, a vacant lot that has potential for something to be added to the street. And these are some other houses along, around the area of Willow and Hedges here, small Staff recommends approval of the code amendment, as well as the overlay zoning requests.
Sorry. I didn't mean to say it that way. I just wanted to make sure I didn't start talking if you were still going to talk. Okay, Commissioners, do we have any questions of the city?
Madam Chair.
I have a bunch.
You have a bunch, or you want to do first?
No, you go first.
Okay. Brian, notifications went out to how many people?
I don't know the exact number. I have a huge list here.
You got a huge list here. How many houses or residential places are within this UDO that you know of?
I don't have the exact number in front of us, but I will point out that the notifications went out to the 185-foot surrounding the district, and I know they had a number of neighborhood meetings on the properties on the inside of the district, but they didn't receive the actual notification that statutory required the 185-foot surrounding properties. It's actually not outlined in the statutes, the internal zoning of it, but the external 185 feet.
So, that's, the notifications went to all the 185 external people inside this. So, you're telling me that the 5,000 residents internally did not get notices of this happening to their project, to their property?
Not this typical, not the 185-foot required notice, no. That would have been part of their-
I don't understand why this is not required inside also.
Yeah, it is just part, it's not actually outlined in the statutes for it.
Well, this does not sound kosher to me if we're going to change people's properties without notifying them, because I do have property in here, and I never got notified. I was never mentioned to go to a meeting or anything. I have several people that have not been notified, so I think we have a problem here right now. So, I'm think, wait, no, 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 you can't talk right now, sorry. So, we have a problem here that we did not get enough notification out to the residents, the owners of all these properties. So, Madam Chair, I am making a motion that we postpone this indefinitely until we get figured out the way to get proper notification to all the residents inside this district, because this is not quite, I would say, legal to do this without proper notification to all the people.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In response to Commissioner Nesbit's remarks, I listened intently to the presentation. But before I talk about that, I have to talk about the excitement, the buzz that this project has brought forth. Not since we worked on Jackson Drive and Artemis area has there been such an outpouring and enthusiasm. I'm just going to put it forward straightforward. I'm disappointed with this presentation. There has been, there was not one mentioning of the economic impact of this overlay. For this commission to take any actions tonight would be an absolute abdication of its responsibilities to the city council. It is impossible for me to cast a vote. And let me just ask, because we've got a house full of people, they have the right to expect more diligence than what we've got here. I can't believe we're presenting this in its current format, and then to ask this commission to make a recommendation to the city council. Commissioner Nesbit, I absolutely agree with you. I enthusiastically support this concept. But we can't possibly, and what angers me, is all of the people who have come down here with the expectation of presenting. This is inappropriate. You're absolutely right, Commissioner, and I'm not happy. Are you happy? I'm not happy, sir.
I'm not happy either. I say, I don't think we got proper notice to the residents in this area, especially since I own property. It's like, I never even knew about that. I got the packet. I mean, that's the only reason I knew about, and they said it's been going on for three years, up to, I talked to a guy yesterday, he said it started in 2011, and it's really picked up in three years ago, but I've never heard anything, and several people have never heard anything until last week. I was getting calls about it, so until I got my packet, I didn't know anything about it. And I have property in this area.
Madam Chair. I yield back. I would like to make a motion, but I think there are other Commissioners-
Well, there's a motion on the table, so we just-
Well, I second that motion, then. I suppose the question before us is, to answer Commissioner Nesbit's question and to conduct an economic impact study and other such studies as are appropriate, how long would that take, sir?
So, we would probably suggest, probably the October, I would suggest the first meeting in October, which is October 10.
In other words, you are reasonably certain that if these people come back down here, that you have dotted i's, crossed t's, and they will have the reasonable expectation of being able to present in October?
That is my expectation, yes.
Madam Chair, I yield back.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Rick, other things I've heard, especially I've talked to some council members, and they would like to see this area probably shrunk to start with, and then if it goes good, we expand it, so maybe we should think about shrinking it down to probably within five to 500 to 1,000 homes around the Inglewood Arts District, instead of such a big area. So, that's just another recommendation that I would pass on. I mean, we could start small, we can always go bigger once we see that it goes and does good, so that way we wouldn't have to spend so much resource money to get this started going, since the city is bringing this, so.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table.
Right, we were just talking about it, yeah.
Right. There was a second?
Yes.
There was a second.
Okay, so do we need to vote on this motion and then, because it sounds to me like we want to add some recommendations?
Well, do we need to make a date of October, or, I said indefinitely, so do we need to make a date of October?
Madam Chair, that's what I wanted to speak on. I just want to clarify, I'm not exactly sure what the intent is, but I want to clarify what your options are. So, right now, the motion is to postpone indefinitely. If that is the motion that is passed, then this, you know, just puts it out there until it's brought back. In that scenario, all of the notices would have to be redone for when that date comes back, okay? And maybe that's your intent, but I just want to be clear. If you, in the alternative, if you postpone it to a date certain, then the notices that have already gone out are still sufficient, because those people had notice of tonight, and then they could look and see, you know, when that it was continued to a date certain. But that would allow you to do additional notices if that's what needs to be done. So, again, I'm not sure what your intent is, I just want to clarify that there is a difference between postponing indefinitely and postponing it to a date certain.
Okay.
Well, I'm sticking with indefinitely, because I think we, all the residents should be noted, since I have property, I would think I should have been noted, besides my packet, since I'm on the commission.
Well, and anyone, additional notices would go out. I'm saying that to the extent anyone who was already notified that it was done to a date certain, that would not be duplicated again, for anyone that already received a notice. But if it is postponed indefinitely, then all notices would have to be redone in order to notify all interested parties of that new date. So, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Why don't we amend the-
He's taking your motion.
-a motion pursuant to the statement by the director.
I think he wants to stick with his.
Because I want to make sure we get notices out to all the residents in this area.
So, are you, do you second his motion to postpone it indefinitely, so that everybody can be re-notified, or?
My second stands in the current format.
Right, because I mean, we're looking at 5,000 residents, and they only put out 400 notices, that's, and you see the signs you put out. I see the signs, but you can't read them when you're driving down the road at 40 mile an hour, you cannot see those signs. My opinion, if we're going to do something like this, there probably should be signs on every block, so people know that something's happening to their area. I don't know if that's ridiculous, but that's just my opinion, because in case the mailman loses the ladder.
Commissioner Nesbit, I still have faith in this planning commission staff-
Okay.
-that they will be forthright and diligent.
Okay.
Do I hear a second?
Yes, we did.
Do I need to get on my thing again?
You are the second.
No, I'm no, second to my second. Then my second stands, Madam Chair.
Okay, so the motion is to postpone indefinitely. There is a second.
And to be clear, you're talking, are you talking about one case or?
Both cases.
Both cases.
Both cases. Because they're presented both. Well, we'll have to do it individually, okay. So, let me go with 23-175-04, since that was the first one read.
Can you do that a little slower for the person who was writing the notes?
Case number 23-175-04, UDO amendment number 58, Inglewood Arts Overlay.
Okay, so your motion?
To postpone indefinitely.
Second.
We're ready for a vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
No.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes.
Am I dog meat? I thought you were a friend of mine.
And Commissioner Preston. It's nothing personal.
Okay. Can't even spell the word. Okay. Next, case 23-100-20, do you have a motion?
I have a motion that case 23-100-20, rezoning Inglewood Arts Overlay District be postponed indefinitely.
Second.
All right, we're ready for the vote.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Nesbit.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner H Wiley.
Yes.
Commissioner L Wiley.
No.
And Chairman McLean.
Yes. Case number 23-100-20 has been postponed indefinitely. So, is there any announcements for the greater good? I had like a page full of questions.
Now, Madam Chair, can we make suggestions to staff now?
That's what, I think that's my question, is are there things that we feel strongly we need answers, that we felt like we're missing from this? I mean-
I think, Madam Chair, I think we can tender those questions to staff appropriately, and that they can incorporate their response and next presentation pursuant to those questions put forward.
How would you like those?
You can send those to us by email.
Okay. Okay, all right. Any other announcements for the greater good?
Staff does not have any.
Okay. Cindy has one. It's Virginia's 80th birthday today, so happy birthday, Virginia. Look at everybody who came for you.
That's what I said when I came in, did all these people come for me?
I did not crumble cookies for all of you, but, so I'm sorry, but Virginia gets them. This meeting is adjourned at, oh my God, I can't see. 7:10, thank you.